Good evening, everyone. I will call our work session that is being held virtually via WebEx of April 13th, 2021 to order. The topic is a series of presentations by our police department on pre-trial diversion, expungement, and bail reform. I will pass it to city manager Rodriguez to open us up.
Thank you, Mayor. We invited our longtime prosecutor, Martin Costello, tonight to share more about his role with the city and then especially his work, innovative work with expungements and diversion programs. Martin is a leader in his field and he literally wrote the book. And I'm using literally correctly. This is the book on Minnesota misdemeanors. And so with that, I will, I will ask Mr. Costello to present to you all tonight.
Good. I will shoot the screen. Well, good evening, everyone. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I prepared a PowerPoint. Is that visible to everybody?
Yep, we can see it.
So just an overview of the presentation would be that I'll explain what is a municipal prosecutor? What are the duties of a municipal prosecutor? And then get to a specific subject matter for tonight, which is bail, diversion, and expungement. But before we get to that, I thought that it would be helpful to just go over what it is that your municipal prosecutor does and what are my duties? Let's advance.
You might use the mouse and maybe the...
We're just thinking about everything. So a municipal prosecutor represents the city in all criminal traffic and ordinance violation cases if the matter arises within the geographical limits of Richfield. I naturally work closely with the law enforcement agencies. That would be primarily the Richfield Police Department, but also the Minnesota State Patrol and the Hennepin County Sheriffs, and occasionally the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension. They have to work with the court system, all that with the goal to effectively enforce law and promote public safety. How is a municipal prosecutor different from the civil city attorney with whom I think the mayor and city manager and council are more familiar? Because dealing with them almost on a day-to-day basis. The civil city attorney, as you know, handles the civil matters, the non-criminal matters involving the city. So a simple example of that would be a contract that the city is going to enter into. The civil city attorney would draft that or edit or critique it and advise the city council on the contract. Whereas a municipal prosecutor is limited to criminal and traffic matters and more specifically, non-felony criminal and traffic matters. So the less serious violations. So if there's a domestic assault, for example, that would be a non-felony matter in most cases. If it happened within Richfield, I would prosecute the case. But it is also true, though, that the civil city attorney and municipal prosecutor work together. For example, on ordinances or quasi-traffic criminal subject matters. So recently, we had an issue as to whether apartment or other rental property owners had to turn over certain information to the Richfield Police Department because we have an ordinance that says that they have to do that. And I was consulted with because the United States Supreme Court had decided a case that seemed to limit that. So I conferred with the city attorney on what advice we would give to the city in light of that new U.S. Supreme Court case. Now, how is a municipal prosecutor different from a county attorney? As you know, Minnesota has a county attorney system. In other states, that can be called a district attorney or a DA. They do essentially the same thing. Minnesota, of course, has 87 counties and each county has an elected county attorney. They're elected to four-year terms. So as we know, Mike Freeman is the elected Hennepin County Attorney. John Troy, for example, is the Ramsey County elected county attorney. The terms are coextensive, one with the other. They're elected in the same election every, every four years. And the county attorney has a very big job. They not only have, they have criminal and civil divisions. They're one of the largest law firms in the state of Minnesota, if you want to look at it that way. Speaking specifically to the criminal, the non-civil part of it, the county attorney prosecutes the felony level offenses like murder or burglary that arise within a particular county. So any felony that happened in Hennepin County, except under unusual circumstances, would be prosecuted by the Hennepin County Attorney's Office. What is a felony? A felony is an offense that's punishable by over one year imprisonment. So it has a year and a day or more, it's a felony. It's prosecuted by the county attorney. If it's up to one year, it's handled by the city attorney. So a municipal prosecutor handles only the offenses, the non-felony offenses that arise within Richfield. Those are crimes where you can get up to a year or a $3,000 fine or both. And those are classified as petty misdemeanors, misdemeanors, and gross misdemeanors. What are the duties of the municipal prosecutor? As I said, we prosecute the petty misdemeanor, misdemeanor, and gross misdemeanor violations at all stages of the prosecution. We also prosecute the ordinance violations. Richfield, like every city, has its own court of ordinances. Those ordinances are either petty misdemeanors or misdemeanor violations. So that's really a fourth duty, petty misdemeanor and then the ordinance violations. And so, for example, we have to initiate the prosecution in many cases by drafting criminal and traffic complaints. But there are other duties that are related to prosecution, such as forfeitures. Minnesota has a forfeiture statute that's certain contraband. So for example, if a firearm is used, say the crime is possession of a firearm, pistol without a permit, that's a gross misdemeanor in Minnesota. We would prosecute the case and also pursue the forfeiture of the offending firearm. Or if a firearm were used or present in a violation, a domestic assault, there might be a firearm present. And if it doesn't involve a felony assault, that would be a gross misdemeanor or misdemeanor. And we would seize and forfeit the firearm. That would be for the public protection, protection of the victims. And then it goes all the way to responding to post-conviction motions. It never ends, even after conviction. The defendant, as we'll see tonight, might want to have their record expunged. That would be a post-conviction motion. But short of expunging the record, the defendant might be on probation and they might want to leave Minnesota, move to a different state. And they would want to be released from the probation requirements or transfer their probation to another state. I would have to work on that with the Hennepin County Probation Department and possibly the receiving state's probation department to arrange that transfer if that were approved by the court. There is a proceeding in Minnesota statutes called a post-conviction remedy, which is a vehicle to correct mistakes that might have occurred. So say there's newly discovered evidence by the defense that would exonerate the defendant, for example. They can have a post-conviction hearing where the trial judge on the case would review the new evidence and decide, should the person be actually not guilty? Or should the conviction be amended to a lower offense? Or should the sentence be changed? So it can go on for years after the end of the criminal case. Now prosecuting criminal and traffic offenses, as I've said, is petty misdemeanor offenses, misdemeanor crimes, gross misdemeanor crimes, and ordinance violations. Notice that we use the word crimes in offenses. A petty misdemeanor is an offense, but it's not a crime. So a person convicted of a petty misdemeanor does not have a criminal record. Similarly, ordinance violations are not crimes. They're infractions or violations. So if a person is convicted of an ordinance violation, say a property maintenance matter or a licensing matter, they would not have a criminal record. Now, in 2020, Richfield had the following case filings. There were a total of 800 in court cases. Eighty-three of them were domestic violence. 192 were DWIs. 291 were other criminal other than domestic. 232 were other traffic other than DWIs. And there were two parking tickets that actually made it to court. There's a couple of parking violations. One of them is handicap parking, for example, because that's a very important parking violation. And occasionally, those will come to court because they are misdemeanors and they do carry a higher fine. The normal kind of no parking zone type parking matter does not go to court. It goes to the hearing officer because those aren't crimes. They carry a very small fine. Now, it's also important to note that 2020 was kind of a depressed year. I shouldn't say kind of, it was a depressed. It was also a depressing year for many of us. But it was depressed in that the court was shut down to a very minimal rate of handling cases for most of the year. It first shut down, although we had court, we had minimal calendars. Then it completely shut down a physical court. We did everything as we are now by Zoom, so only fewer cases were handled. But even in a year like 2020, Richfield has a lot of cases in court each year. Petty misdemeanors, as we said, petty misdemeanors are punishable by up to a $300 fine. No jail time can be imposed for a petty misdemeanor. So common misdemeanors, petty misdemeanors are often traffic violations, speeding, fear to stop. And there are some quasi-criminal matters. Possession of a small amount of marijuana, for example, would be a petty misdemeanor. Possession of marijuana or of drug paraphernalia, like a marijuana smoking pipe, for example, would be a petty misdemeanor. Those you can't go to jail for, you can only get a fine. And importantly, they are not crimes. So if you're convicted of them, you do not have a criminal record. So our filings, as you can see from the outline there, there were 200, 2,245. And I can't see the, can you move that? So 2,245 criminal, 864 traffic, 2813 parking, although only two of those parking made it to court, as I told you. Most people just pay their parking ticket. And for a total of 3,901. Now, most of those cases, though, the people just pay their fines. They get a minor criminal matter, say a small amount of marijuana. That's called a payable offense. They can just pay the fine. Similarly, with traffic, as I've explained, they don't have to go to court unless they want to fight the traffic ticket. They can always just pay the fine. But nonetheless, that is, once again, a lot of cases, even during a year like 2020. Now misdemeanors are crimes punishable by up to 90 days in jail and $1,000 fine. Now, two things are important about that. I'm saying crimes now because misdemeanors are crimes. Because if it carries any kind of a jail sentence, no matter how theoretical, it's a crime. It's up to 90 days and $1,000 fine. It's good to keep in mind that that's the maximum penalty. That's reserved for the worst cases. People with bad fact situations and probably a prior record. It's rare to see anybody get 90 days and $1,000 fine on a misdemeanor. They're going to have to be a repeat violator. And it's going to have to be probably a crime against a person, like an assault or a domestic assault, something like that. Common misdemeanors are some driving offenses, careless driving, people consuming alcohol under 21, now tobacco under 21, disorderly conduct, first-time domestic assault, most first-time DWIs, driving without a license, that kind of thing. And as I mentioned, most ordinance violations are misdemeanors, although they are not crimes. Gross misdemeanors are crimes punishable by up to one year in jail and a $3,000 fine. Now, once again, that's the maximum penalty. It's rare that we see somebody get a year in jail and a $3,000 fine. Occasionally, we will see something like that or close to it. But that would have to be something like a real chronic DWI case or a chronic domestic assault defendant before they would get anything close to that. Common gross misdemeanor crimes are obstructing legal process with force, which sadly, we see a lot of now, people fighting with the police, not obeying lawful orders, that type of thing. Repeat DWIs, your second and third DWI within 10 years is a gross misdemeanor. Interfering with an emergency phone call. That's sometimes a companion violation to a domestic assault. A domestic assault might be going on. The victim will try to call 911 and the perpetrator will snatch their phone away and smash it or pull the phone out of, if it's a landline, pull the phone out of the wall, that type of thing. That's a gross misdemeanor offense. Some, most driver's license violations are misdemeanors. But one class of offender, you know, nautical to public safety, those are chronic DWI people, where they've had three or more DWI convictions, their license gets canceled as a nautical to public safety. They have to go through a long rehabilitation to get their license back. And that's a gross misdemeanor. Now prosecuting these ordinance violations, ordinance violations, as I say, are mostly misdemeanors. Now, those are very important to municipal prosecutors because they're important to cities. Our city code really kind of fine-tunes the state statutes and really describes what day-to-life, day-to-day life in the city might be. These are the quality of life issues that are important to city residents. Such as noise or public nuisances. So typical examples will be, sometimes people will have a home occupation and they won't have a permit to do that. And we've had people who are running car repair businesses in their garages. They're working at night, it's noisy, they have dangerous chemicals. They have vehicles on their property in various states of repair, which are attractive nuisances to children. It offends quality of life. People in residential neighborhoods live and buy property in residential neighborhoods to live there, not to be next to a car repair business. So we try to enforce those and we do it in, and similarly with dilapidated property, unsafe conditions on property, that type of thing. And we enforce those in two ways. One is we try to get voluntary compliance. The city will, court enforcement department will work with the violator to try to get them in compliance. If they're really reluctant, it'll turn over to me. I don't jump on them and start prosecuting it right away unless it's endangering people. I'll write them a letter, explain the ordinance, and explain that if they don't comply, they'll be summoned into court and explain what that would entail and then give them a reasonable deadline. I would say that 95% of the people to whom I write on ordinance violations comply within the deadline. That's the end of it. It's only that one, that 5% that we bring into court. And then the judges expect us to try to do that, to try to resolve our problems outside of court. And then we do that, then the judges back us up. They say, look, you had your chance. Now you're in court and you need to comply. So those are very important. It's a very important part of my job to handle the court enforcement. And that's another time when we'll work with the civil city attorney. Because sometimes prosecuting the violator isn't enough. In that home repair business that I talked about a second ago, we had to not only prosecute the person, but also get a civil city injunction against the person. We've had to do that several times in my career. So I worked with the civil city attorney to get a civil injunction, where we go before a judge who issues an injunction. And that gives the city power to, among other things, rebate the violation. We have actually gone onto property with city trucks to remove offending businesses, tools, and so on pursuant to a court injunction. Very rare, but it does happen. Now, with that background, bail, diversion, and expungement fall within the context of prosecution. And what I thought I would do, what I did here is outline the stages of the proceeding and show you when and where bail gets involved, diversion gets involved, or expungement. So let's start with the first step in court. We have essentially five steps in criminal or traffic proceedings. An arraignment, a pre-trial conference, a jury or court trial, a sentencing or discharge dismissal, and possibly an expungement. So the arraignment starts the proceeding. That's when the person first comes to court. Now, they'll be advised of the right, they'll get, they'll have their attorney or get one appointed if they can't afford an attorney. A public attorney is appointed for them. And bail will get set if that person is in custody. But it's always bail or a conditional release. One thing to remember about bail is that nearly all the people who are prosecuted with non-felony violations, they're not in custody. And they're not out on bail either. The vast majority of the cases, they're issued a citation or they're issued a summons, so an officer will issue a citation. Obvious example of that would be a traffic ticket. They don't have to post any bail. And they're petty misdemeanors, no bail is required. They can either pay the ticket or come to court. But even on criminal or quasi-criminal, say the Richfield police are called to a noisy party or a disturbance and there's disorderly conduct, the first thing they'll try to do is quiet it down and get the people dispersed and not take any action. They get called back, that happens often, or called back a couple of times. They might have to issue a ticket for disorderly gathering, disorderly conduct. But they're, the people aren't arrested. They don't post bail, they come to court voluntarily. So the most important thing to remember about bail is that in non-felony matters, there's rarely bail. But if there is bail, if the person isn't custody yet, that first appearance is going to be set. And they always have two things. One is bail is set because they have a right to bail. They have a right to say, look, I just want to post my bail and get out of here. But it's always coupled with conditional release. The judge always gives them an option of, say, $100 bail or stay away from, say it's a theft case and they're alleged to have stolen something from Target. And for some reason, they got arrested because of their repeat violator or something. And the bail is set at $100. But they're always given an option of not going back to Target during the case. So if they agree to do that, they won't have to post the bail or stay away from the victim, say a domestic assault or just assault between strangers. They would, bail would be set, say, $250 bail. But they wouldn't have to post that, they could have just agreed to stay away from the victim, have no contact with the victim. And that satisfies the bail requirement. So the time when somebody actually has to post bail, even though it's a bailable offense, are very few. So on the pre-trial conference is the next step. That's when plea negotiations go on, cases get resolved, and possible diversion of the case can occur at a pre-trial conference. Because at this point, both the prosecutor and the defender have studied the case. They've looked at the facts. They've got some background on the defendant. They can see where certain needs might be fulfilled and diversion might be appropriate. So that's number two, cases getting diverted out of the criminal justice system into programming. So we might have cases where alcohol is the problem or anger is the problem, even theft cases, as programming that when a person has a clear record and they've made a mistake, rather than prosecute them and give them a criminal record, they're diverted out of the system into programming. And they can earn a dismissal of the case by completing their programming successfully. This theft case that might involve the programming plus restitution. They might have to pay back for the goods that they stole. Or if it's a property damage thing, they might have to pay for the repair costs to satisfy the victim. There might be restorative justice meetings, that type of thing. Then the next stage is a jury or court trial. Bail and diversion are already taken care of at this point. We'll have a trial, either a jury trial or a court trial. If the defendant is found not guilty, that's the end of it. If the defendant is found guilty, we go on to step four, sentencing or discharge or dismissal. Because even then, even after a person is found guilty, they couldn't get sentenced. They, in our theft case example, the person might get a suspended jail sentence of, say, 30 days suspended for one year on the condition of no more theft violations, make restitution, stay away from Home Depot or wherever the theft occurred. That might happen. But even at this stage, after the person has been found guilty, they can still be diverted because instead of imposing a guilty finding, the court can stay adjudication. Stay is a legal word that means stop or hold in abeyance. The judge can say, well, this is your first time, there's extenuating circumstances. And so I'm going to stop or hold the adjudication for, say, one year on conditions one, two, and three, which normally are remain law-abiding, there's almost always a treatment or counseling element. And then maybe there's some community service, some restitution, some restorative justice. And if the defendant fulfills those conditions, they're never adjudicated guilty. They never have a criminal record. And a variation on that is a stay of imposition of sentence. The court will say, look, I'm going to find you guilty now, but I'm not going to impose a sentence. I'm going to give you a chance to earn a clear record. I'll stay in position of sentencing, say, for one year on conditions of X, Y, and Z, pretty much what I've already said. And then we'll look at it in a year and see how you're doing. If you're doing well, I'll never impose a sentence and I'll vacate the matter and dismiss the case and you could have a clear record. But sometimes people are sentenced. They've had their chance. Or it's a serious matter, a crime against a person, for example, and they get a sentence. And that sentence could be either probation or jail, fine or both. Then the last stage, even after the case is done, is expungement. It occurs afterward. And expungement is a process where a defendant can go back to court after the case is closed. You have to have a clear record for two years in most cases. And you have to have met your, all of your probation requirements be done with probation. So if you had to make restitution or restorative justice or whatever, you're done with that. And then you have a need to have your case expunged. Those needs are employment. Some kinds of convictions are prohibit people from getting certain kind of jobs or housing. Sometimes the conviction, kinds of convictions prohibit people from getting certain rental things. Or it's interesting, sometimes people can't get federally insured loans for student loans if they have a criminal record of certain kinds. And so those reasons are put before the court. There's a hearing on it. And if the judge agrees, the record can be expunged. So bail, we've talked about that. It's important to understand what the bail is. If there is bail at all on petty misdemeanor, it's just twice the highest cash fine. It can be up to $600. It's rare to see that much, but it does happen. But always, there's an alternative, post the bail or stay away from the victim or stay away from Target where the theft occurred or whatever. Misdemeanor bail, because it's twice the highest cash fine, can be up to $2,000, but the same conditions apply. But there are some sections, some requirements here that are different. Once you get into the DWI area, for one thing, the maximum bail is four times the highest cash fine quadrupled. So the maximum bail is $12,000. And in domestic abuse, the maximum bail is 10 times the highest cash fine, up to $10,000. Now, we don't see too many $12,000 or $10,000 bails, but we do see it. And the difference here is this, is that repeat DWIs and domestic abuse pose a threat to citizens in Richfield or people driving through Richfield. A DWI sadly can have some extreme consequences if there's an accident. Domestic abuse, it's been shown, can have serious physical consequences and psychological damage to the victim. So the bail can be higher. So the bail can be higher. Now, there's some times, some few offenses where bail is required in DWIs and domestic violence. State law requires an arrest, jailing, appearing before a judge and setting bail. So when I charge a domestic violence case or a DWI case, if it's one of those cases, I don't have any discretion. And when the officers arrest somebody on a repeat DWI or even a first-time domestic violence, the officers have no discretion under state law. They have to take the person to jail and the defendant has to appear before a judge to deal with the situation. That's the law. It's a small percentage, but it does happen. All other offenses are subject to discretionary bail. And there's always alternatives to bail. Even on mandatory bail cases, once the person finally appears before a judge, the judge can grant conditional release. So in a DWI, there's an alcohol monitoring program. There's the equipment and vehicles where you can't start it if you've been using alcohol called Interlock, that type of thing. But most alternatives bail are on the person's own recognizance. They're put on their good behavior not to go back to the scene of the crime and make all of their court appearances. Now, a new development as an alternative to bail is the so-called sign and release warrant. Normally, when, I shouldn't say normally. In the past, normally, when a person did not appear in court, the court would issue a warrant for the arrest. It's called a bench warrant. Because we have to get somebody into court to deal with the problem. A recent development in the last year or so is the so-called sign and release warrant, where the court will issue a warrant and that'll be put into the system. But say an officer comes across the defendant in a speeding stop and they have a sign and release warrant. The officer simply advises the defendant that they have a sign and release warrant. The person signs and agrees within so many days to make a court appearance. I had Zoom court this afternoon and three people didn't appear. We issued sign and release warrants in every one of those cases. So the people are not going to be arrested. They're going to get at least one more chance to come to court. Diversion. Now, as I said, diversion, we divert cases out of the criminal justice system. I would say of all of our cases, both traffic and criminal, about 25% get diverted. Now, that may seem like a large percentage or a small percentage to you depending on your view. But keep in mind that traffic violations are the largest number and many people just pay their fine. They get a speeding ticket. They were, went through a red light. They rolled through a stop sign, whatever. They're not going to come to court and contest it. And they don't get diverted. They just pay their fine. That's the end of it. So it's really about 25% of the cases that come to court. And there's several vehicles that the law allows for pre-trial diversion. You, the, there's a statute that allows me to continue, me and any other prosecutor, to continue cases for dismissal right, right away without a plea. Typical example of that was be a person, say that noisy party that I talked about a bit ago where they wouldn't settle down. And so the officer had to issue a disorderly conduct or a noise violation, ordinance violation. They come to court. Person has no record. They're in school. You know, they just a little youthful exuberance or something. They've learned their lesson. I might continue that for dismissal right away for a year on the condition that they just don't do it again. They have no conviction. They go on with their life. We hope never to see them in court again. And for the most part, we never see them again. Then a little more formal procedure under our criminal rules, rule 2705. That's a formal diversion agreement. Those are for misdemeanor violations and gross misdemeanor violations. It's a formal written agreement between the prosecution, the defense, and the court to divert the case. And then if you look to the right there, we divert them out of the criminal justice system and we have a written agreement for restorative justice, community service, counseling, rehabilitation. And often that agreement will involve at least two of those matters. And restorative justice might have some iterations to it, such as meeting with the victims, restitution, that type of thing. Community service, we have sentenced to service. Those are the people who you see picking up trash on the highways, for example, or community service agencies. Sometimes counseling, personal counseling, alcohol counseling, that type of thing. So those are the vehicles. See, formal diversion agreement continues for dismissal. Now, another interesting way the cases are diverted is through the hearing officer. Richfield, like every jurisdiction in Hennepin County, is a participant in the hearing officer program. We've done this for at least 10 years, maybe longer, where for minor violations, the so-called payable violations, the people don't have to come to court. They appear normally video even before the pandemic. Now via Zoom. And there, before a hearing officer, each prosecutor is given guidelines to the hearing officer as to how those particular cases are handled. Usually traffic and quasi-criminal are handled the same way, but ordinance violations might be a little bit different for each city. And the hearing officer reviews the case and can grant diversion pursuant to the guidelines that the prosecutor has established. And a lot of cases get diverted that way. Now, if the, they can't work it out with the hearing officer, they, they get at least a second chance at diversion because they can say, well, I would like to talk to the prosecutor about this. I understand it doesn't fit the guidelines, but mine is a special case. And there are extenuating circumstances that I think the prosecutor should hear. That happens frequently. And so it goes on to the payable calendar. A payable calendar is for minor matters. We do those by Zoom now. That was the calendar that I did this afternoon. And the defendant can make his or her case for, among other things, diversion or to have the fine suspended or to have no fine at all or for a lower charge or a different charge. So those are all forms of diversion. Expungement, that's this last step. Minnesota has a comprehensive statute on expungement. And it was expanded in 2015 to facilitate expungements. The idea being that once a person has completed their probation and they're back on track with their lives, a criminal conviction should not prohibit them from doing the things that I mentioned earlier. Getting a job, getting an apartment, getting a student loan, many things. So the statute does that. You, it's a court proceeding. The court has found that it can do those by Zoom. I bet we never go back to personal hearings and expungements. I bet they're always done by Zoom from now on. They can make their pitch after filing the proper papers. They don't have to get a lawyer. And in fact, the court's self-help website has all of the papers. They just fill in the blanks electronically and file it electronically. Some people get lawyers, but you don't have to. And that's one way of doing it. Another way it's doing is by agreement of the prosecutor. The law was amended to allow the prosecutor to agree in advance that if the person successfully completes their probation, they wouldn't even have to go through that procedure. It's already set up where they can get their expungement once they've completed their probation and their probation officer has given them the green light. Now, the perk to expungement is, as I say, after two years, no new offenses and they have to show a need, such as employment or housing and so on. And most people have that need. It's amazing the amount of disqualifications that occur for even misdemeanor convictions. It's, that last bullet point is we, we have to balance the need to clear the record with the need to retain criminal and traffic information. That's the balance that the court tries to see. Because speaking as the prosecutor, which is my role in all of this, is that we need to know prior records. So for example, if a person has two DWIs in 10 years, that's a more serious offense. If they have three, if they have over three, it's even a felony. We need to have that information to determine, is this a first timer or is this a repeat violator? Same thing with domestic violence and harassment and stalking. Those violations get more serious if the offender keeps doing them. And we need to balance the need for that information with the defendant's need to clear the record. So I'm, I hope we have some time for questions here. I believe we have questions. And I just kind of giving you an idea of things that you might be interested in, why bail or no bail to begin with. Bail is to guarantee the defendant's court appearance. And alternatives to that bail are conditional release. You don't have to post bail as long as you don't do it again, stay away from the victim and make your court appearances. And the most important thing for me as a prosecutor in bail is protecting the victim and the witnesses. And in DWI cases, I consider the traffic, you know, the traveling public to be victims or potential victims. In property, in personal crimes, we have a real victim. And that's the most important thing to me is to protect that victim. And if we can do it without bail, fine. If we can't do it, then there's going to have to be bail. And similarly, our witnesses, we don't want witnesses harassed, harangued, or intimidated. And in fact, in complaints and so on, we won't even use the name of the victim or the witness. We always say victim one, victim two, or we use the initials of the victims. There's just too much harassment and intimidation going on. So that's the most important condition of bail. Diversion, you know, which cases get diverted and which don't? Well, I have some criteria that I like to use and I'm not alone in this. I've just got this through experience. No prior criminal or traffic record. That's an important consideration. And it's not a total disqualifier, but you know, a person's got to clear a record. That's a valuable commodity, not only to the defendant, but to society. And if there's any way we can preserve that, diversion might be a way to do it. And naturally, we divert minor offenses as opposed to more serious violations. A repeat domestic violence offender is not going to get diverted. It's just not going to happen. I don't know very many prosecutors that are going to try that and most judges are not going to approve that. It's, it's gone too far. The court needs to deal with it. So it's property versus person offenses. If, if it's just property theft or damage to property, we can deal with that outside of the criminal justice system in many cases. If it's a crime against the person, we've got to be more careful. And then another question, is there programming available? And courts and cities have limited resources. Sometimes we just don't have the programming for it. And when is expulsion property, proper? Of course, they have to meet the time requirements. They have to complete their probation, not have any new offenses. And they show that need for the, so if they fulfill all those requirements, I, they're going to get expunged. So I think that's story I'm sticking to, as we say, in the criminal justice system. And I'd be happy to entertain any additional questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Costello, for that overview. That was extremely comprehensive and detailed of all the work that you do. So thank you so much for that presentation. I'm sure the council has questions. So would anyone like to start with asking questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. I have two questions. They're just, I don't know, it's just kind of random things that I noticed during it. I was curious in the, you know, max jail time versus max fine for the different levels of misdemeanor. They seem like really out of whack. And I'm just kind of curious why that is. Like a $3,000 max fine seems like a much less big deal than a year in jail. So like, are fines not really like a main part of punishment? Or why are they, why do they seem so disproportionate as max?
Well, the, the, the length of jail, if any, and fines are established by the legislature. So we're stuck with that. And it doesn't keep up with inflation, I can tell you that. When I started prosecuting, this is long about the same time the earth cooled. I've been prosecuting since 1974. And I've been prosecuting Sir Richfield since 1989. And when I started prosecuting, a misdemeanor was punishable by a $300 fine. Now it's punishable by a $1,000 fine, but that's nowhere near inflation. And gross misdemeanors were a $1,000 fine. Now they're 3,000. So it is particularly compared to the jail time, which has been standard throughout all the time I've been prosecuting. It's always been 90 days for misdemeanor, a year for a gross misdemeanor. And the way the court, I'd agree with you. It would result in a balance. And the way that that's solved, I think, is by the court not imposing all the jail time or imposing but not executing. In other words, the judge could give 90 days, but suspend it or suspend, say the person spent a couple of days in jail already, whether at a mandatory arrest. The judge might say, I'll give you 90 days. I'll stay 88. I'll give you credit for two and I'll put you on probation. And if you don't violate again, you'll never have to serve the 88. Or sometimes the judge just imposes 30 days and stays it and has the person do community service. So the judge has the opportunity to adjust that and kind of sand off what I agree are the rough edges of that. And also the prosecutor has a role because we, we can recommend that. And I often do. I rarely ask for the maximum penalty. It's just a rare case. For a number of reasons. One thing, I don't think that the maximum penalty is warranted very often. Also, I don't want to cry wolf. It, I want to save that for that really repeat dangerous domestic violator, that repeat dangerous DWI violator. And if I'm always asking that everybody goes to jail and everybody gets a high fine, you know, I'm not going to be listened to when it's really important.
Okay. Just one other thing I was wondering about is, you know, it's interesting to hear about all the different paths and all the different sort of ways that resolution on justice can be found. At the same time, it seems a little bit concerning when it's so squishy. Like what's to prevent basically a wealthier person or certain, a person of a certain race is being seen more favorably by the court and getting a lighter sentence when there's so many options available to them?
Well, I think that that's happens and that's one of the valid critiques of our criminal justice system. It's something that the system is, struggles with all the time. Because I, I think your point's very perceptive is that the, the condition's safe for diversion, clear record, minor offense. Person, you know, being in school or having a job and not wanting to lose that. Those often describe privileged people. And we have to look at other people's lives. So having a clear record, to me, it's, it's a good thing, but it's not a deal breaker. And so we have people who don't have a clear record, but it's been a while or they, they still will cooperate. They can be diverted or they can get a probationary sentence. And I think that's up to the prosecutor and the judges to do that. And I think sometimes we fail to do that. And it's a constant struggle. And this is particularly true as our system diversifies more. We get more people of color. We get more people from different cultures and backgrounds. And we have to be sensitive to that and not have a one-size-fits-all system that describes my life, for example. I just don't think I've got the right to impose my life as a condition on people who don't live my life.
Okay, thank you.
But it's a challenge.
Thank you. Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess we were asked for questions. I'm going to offer a suggestion. I don't know if that is what is expected, but I, I pretty strongly believe as much, if, if others agree that we should not have a cash bail system, I think that if someone is, if they are safe to be out in the community with whatever the with whatever the certain conditions are, then they should be able to do that. It should not be dependent on whether they have $300 or $1,000 in their bank account. I think that it leads to a system where poor people are left in jail more often than wealthy people. And just because someone has, even if they have $10,000 in their bank account, that doesn't make them any more or less of a danger to the community. And so I think, I would hope that in most cases, we can find conditions that would make it safe for them to be out in the community. But I don't think how much money they can pay or not is a good indicator of whether that is true. So that would be my strongest suggestion. And then my second one is just that I think the expungement process you described sounds good. I would just encourage, it sounds like this is already happening in some cases, but in as many cases as possible, that if there are conditions that would allow someone to have their record expunged, that we like set that up from the start to happen automatically and not expect them to remember and come back and jump through a bunch of hurdles. That I think your comment about... I'm not at all surprised that every single person with a criminal record can meet the condition of it holding them back from something. I think I've heard from people who have a criminal record from 27 years ago who still can't find any housing and can't put their name on the lease and struggle to find employment. So I think as many hurdles as we can remove, I'm not saying that as soon as they're done with probation, it's expunged immediately. But I think the conditions you laid out are reasonable and that rather than expecting people to track themselves and come back, that that should happen automatically as much as possible.
And if I could follow up, and those are two good points. On the bail situation, there are some states that have eliminated cash bail. New York has eliminated cash bail, and California has done it, not legislatively, but about two weeks ago, the California Supreme Court issued a ruling that all but eliminates cash bail in California. But you have to be careful about that because, so that it doesn't mean that people get released, but people get held in jail who would have had cash bail sent. And that's what could happen in some of those cases. The Minnesota system, which is statutory, except for first degree murder, all offenses are bailable. That means that the court has to set bail. You can't have pretrial detention in Minnesota, except for first degree murder. And so that's an important thing, is so at least there is some way that through somehow coming up with an amount of money, people can get out of jail pretrial. And also, another thing in Minnesota is that on the nonfelony matters, and that's what I deal with, I just, to begin with, the vast majority of our people, they're not even in jail to begin with. We deal with a small percentage, and we're very careful. And the courts are very careful and scrutinize the bail requests and deny them a lot. But we do have to be careful about that. And I mean, I just try to do that. But the people who are in jail on nonfelony matters, they're entitled to a trial within 10 days. So with the felonies, it's different. And I just don't handle felonies. And so I can't tell you a lot about how many people are in jail waiting for trial. But I can tell you that in nonfelony cases, if they're held on bail, they get a trial within 10 days. Normally, what that's going to mean is our jury trial calendars start on Mondays. And so sometime during the week, Wednesday, person's held in jail, they're going to get their trial date in less than 10 days. It's going to be Monday. And those in custody cases take priority. So still, yeah, they're stuck in jail, but they're not languishing in jail waiting for the trial in nonfelony cases. Then on the diversion thing, I couldn't agree with you more. I think it's been a positive development. But we always have that caution, though, of balancing the need for those public records. I agree with that 27-year-old violation. We probably don't need it anymore. The so-called look back periods aren't that long. You know, sometimes people just, even if they don't need it, they would just like to have a clear record, just as a matter of conscience. And I think a person ought to be able to say, look, I've lived in... I don't think they should have to wait 27 years either, you know. 75 years later, said, look, I've been a good citizen, so on. I don't need this. I've got a job. I've got a place to live. But I would just like to have a clear record, and we should honor that.
Are there other questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Chauvin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. Mr. Costello, what is the best title for you? Could we also call you city attorney? We know that we reserve that for a civil jury. Is that a fair title for you in this role?
City prosecutor. Please call me Martin.
Yes. Well, thanks, Martin, and Prosecutor Costello. I wanted to thank you, one, for the presentation. It's helpful to know and how thorough it is and how you took us through different facets of the criminal justice system that really touch our city government, which is really important. Also, really grateful for just your candor and frank assessment of the shortcomings of our justice system, which is always a work in progress. But just in response to those challenges, I really appreciate that. And one question I have, you know, not to put you on the spot, but I think when you talked about, you know, the spirit outcomes and how, you know, when you're evaluating people for diversion, you know, the indicia of qualifying for having no criminal record, you know, map on almost perfectly to a privileged life. This really points really well taken. So I would be really interested in in systems and hearing from you at a later date, whether in a work session or in a memo. And I know it's something that you think about, as we've talked about a number of times. But hearing your best thoughts and ideas about how to tackle that. I mean, that's a work session, that's a project in and of itself, to say, well, those are the challenges. And we appreciate you. And like you say, you've been here since 1989. You won't be here forever. So to the extent that you're able to implement systems that really tackle, you know, I think we would all agree, are just really fundamental challenges in this moment right now. I want to thank you for acknowledging that and working towards that, but would look forward to continuing to put in systems and knowing what kind of resources you might need to be able to tackle those at a higher level. So even knowing what tools you need would be really helpful.
Well, I'd be happy to continue to work with you. My thoughts are continuing to develop on all this. You know, I do try to think about my own life as well because I come from a lower-middle-class background. I'm one of 11 children. We actually had a family of 15, 11 children, two parents, and two grandparents. And my father worked for the post office in St. Paul. My mother was a homemaker. And I think of all the breaks, just having that good family was a break. And I think of all the breaks that I got in my life where I could have gone in a different direction. The school counselors and that kind of thing. And I try to think of that when I do my job and make decisions such as diversion or sentencing. And I always think to myself, if a young person has done something wrong, I think back and try to remember, well, maybe I did cross that line myself when I was in my late teens or early twenties. And if I'd gotten convicted, I probably wouldn't have got into law school. And maybe this person should get a second chance, just like I got a second chance. And I think that even though I had the family that just got through describing, I was a white, middle-class person. And you got a lot of breaks just because of that. And we have to be mindful of that.
And I hope our former mayor, Pat Elliott, wouldn't mind. But I know he's told this story many times and publicly that when he was starting out as a young adult in Richfield, he, were it not for some diversion opportunities, would not have been mayor or would not have made it into law school either.
Yeah, I think if we think, look back at our own lives, and sometimes, you know, we, there's those obvious breaks, but there's the not-so-obvious breaks that you just, you know, because when I was a kid, you know, if the parents could handle it, they let the parents handle it. But if you didn't have parents, if you didn't have a family, it couldn't be handled that way.
Thank you. Any other questions before we wrap up? Councilmember Supple.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you for a very thorough and comprehensive report. I learned a lot from this. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. I'll just add a couple of things. Once again, thank you so much for that presentation. And in response to Councilmember Wayland's comment on the cash bail, so in your response, essentially, you're saying that that is something that has to be taken care of at the state level. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
Yeah, most of the things that I talked about, the existence of bail, the amount of bail, the requirement of bail would have to be at the state level in terms of the maximums, the adjustments and so on. And then also, it's a matter of Minnesota constitutional law. The Minnesota constitution says all offenses are bailable. And that's supposed to be a good thing. That's supposed to stop pretrial detention.
Thank you. And then in terms of an expungement policy in Richfield or to the points that Councilmember Wayland was making and you had responded to acknowledging the inequities in the system, what do we as a city council, working in partnership with you and our public safety department, have in terms of making sure that we are functioning at least at the city level with best practices, taking those inequities into account? So I know that there could be possibly city policies or recommendations that we make to the judge, possibly as a recommendation? So I guess my question is, what are those areas that we can work on together in this realm to make sure that we are leading with that best practice? And, you know, I would love to kind of do an assessment and see how we could move that forward.
I think that would be a good idea. I think it would start with trying to describe what are the best practices? And then maybe reduce those to writing or to a policy.
And absolutely, I think best practices within the realm of the city government, right? Because it sounds like there's a lot of stuff that is out of our hands, but then that could be added to our legislative platform, you know, that we advocate for at the state level. So I think that would be, it sounds like there's a lot of interest from you, from the council, on exploring what that would look like. But I think that would be great for our residents.
Yeah, policies and best practices and guidelines are a good thing. It shouldn't depend on the opinions of just one person, like the personality of the prosecutor. Shouldn't say, well, I don't like to do it that way, or that's not the way I do it. And there should be guidelines, and we should try to identify the best practices and try to employ those. I agree.
Thank you very much. Well, I will just, I don't know if I should pass it to chief or to the city manager to wrap us up. I know we have 10 minutes until our city council meeting. But thank you so much to Mr. Costello for your tremendous dedication to Richfield and for this great work session.
Well, thank you. It's a privilege to serve Richfield as its prosecutor.
Oh, and I see a comment from Councilmember Wayland around clarifying next steps and just timeline about what we recently just requested, looking at best practices and where at the city level we might be able to instate those.
The steps, maybe the chief of police and I could work together first and come up with an outline. We have, there is a paper floating around here somewhere that I've written on our three topics tonight. Maybe we could add a section on best practices on the expungement thing. And that would be a... That'd be a starting point. As far as the schedule, you know, the timeline, that would be something that I think the council would center.
Mayor and council members, I can work on that with Martin, and then we can present that. I'll present that to the city manager, she can share with you, and then we can look at what next steps we need to take.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, any last comments, City Manager Rodriguez, before I adjourn our meeting?
No, thank you, Mayor. I mean, mostly this was informational, but I appreciate the suggestions and it sounds like we got a work plan going forward.
Thank you so much, City Manager Rodriguez, Prosecutor Costello, and Chief Head Thorne. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll adjourn our meeting.